Pacheco lead us in invocation which will follow by the flag salute. So at this point, I'll ask everyone to please stand those who are able to do so.
And we ask the heavenly father to bless this day. Thank you for the rain that's coming that is long needed in California and thank you for all the wonderful gifts you have given all of us here in this great country that we have as our year ends. I want to thank you for the men and women that have put their lives in danger, in harm's way, and please keep them safe and those that have passed on, we ask you to bless them and their families. We ask you to bless and watch over our police officers, our firefighters, and all those that are in emergency care for our communities. We ask you to please bless all those in leadership and give them the wisdom and the strength to lead our city in the right path and the right direction. For these, we ask our lord, amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, we'll place the flag. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. At this point, I'm going to ask our madam city clerk to take roll call. Good evening.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you, madam city clerk. This point, I want to go ahead and over go where the section that says reports on closed session. I do have items one, three, and four. The city council received a briefing on this items. Staff was giving direction, no reportable action was taken. Item number two, the city council authorized the city attorney to file a lawsuit to oppose the olive pit proposed by the city of Irwindale. So that's the only item and that was a direction provided over to our legal counsel. We will now go over, we don't have actually no presentations this evening. So we'll go ahead and go, sorry, we just, yes, we do. I guess the reorganization we're going to do after?
I'm looking at it right now.
I guess, let's go and, you want to do it now? Okay, all right. The reorganization of the city council selection of mayor Protem. So at this point, staff recommends city council complete the reorganization of the city council, follow procedures suggested for the selection of the mayor Protem as follow. So one, the city clerk opens a nomination for the office of mayor Protem. Any council members may nominate and no second to be nominated is required. So at this point, we'll open up for election for the mayor Protem position.
Mayor?
Yes, council member? Yes.
I'm sorry, I would like to nominate Cruz Baca for mayor Protem. Thank you.
Okay, any objections saying that? Congratulations, mayor Protem Cruz Baca.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, who is vacating the position. I want to thank you very much. Thank you, you were the mayor at the last meeting. All right, thank you very much. All righty. Okay, so at this point, at this point, we're going to go over to the proclam, oh, the, we're going to go and change the plaques there.
Well, congratulations, Councilwoman Cruz Baca. I think you're the first, first year council member to be the mayor Protem.
That's right.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you very much. And I know that my cousin Anna Montenegro and my mom and dad would be really happy for this moment.
Congratulations.
And thank you to the nomination, Susan, councilmember Rubio, and of course, to you, Ricardo. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so at this point, we're going to go on over to the proclamations. We had the presentation by recycling ambassadors and Terry Muse, Waste Management, Inc., reporting on the Ballpark Waste Management Recycling Program. So at this point, go ahead, come on up here. Thank you. We'll bring the guests. Thank you very much. Good evening. Good evening.
There we go. Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem, city council members, staff, and community. I'm Terry Muse from Waste Management and extremely honored to be here tonight to report back to you the progress to date with the Ballpark Waste Plus Recycling Program. First, I want to give a little bit of background on the program and how it came into, came into effect. Many of you are familiar that California passed, well, California enacted a bill called AB 341, which actually mandated that commercial businesses and multifamily properties implemented recycling program. And this was actually passed in 2012. They give you until 2020 to reach a certain goal. And that goal is that by 2020, you'll have 75% of your trash diverted into recyclables. And this applies to businesses that generate four yards or more a week, which is basically, you see that standard trash bin that most businesses have, it's that, a little bit bigger than that, or they have five or more multifamily units. That applies to them. Before the Ballpark Waste Plus Recycling Program was adopted, less than 8% of the commercial multifamily customers had recycling in Ballpark. And that was contributing to a less than, a 2% diversion rate. So you can see very far away from the state mandate, which actually right now is 50%. By 2020, will be 75%. So the city council was very proactive in looking at ways to be able to reach that goal and pass the Ballpark Waste Plus Recycling Program in September. And that program basically makes recycling compliance accessible for all businesses, makes it very easy for them to be able to comply with the new law. Instead of Waste Management just going out and delivering recycled bins to all the businesses and basically leaving them on their own, we decided to partner with the California Center for Public Health Advocacy, representatives who you see here tonight, who became our recycling ambassadors. And Waste Management actually made a grant of $12,500 to the agency to be able to employ recycling ambassadors to actually go out and do waste audits. And it was a very great partnership because these are residents from the community who have been doing this type of work for the Healthy Initiative, have already been interacting with businesses and multifamily complexes. It was a natural partnership. So between September 11th and November 14th, they actually went out and performed waste audits. We attempted to visit every single business and multifamily property in Ballpark. They actually assessed the customer's need and offered the recycling program to them. It took us a little longer than we thought. We're currently in the process of figuring out exactly which size bin each business needs, but by January 1st, 2015, the program will be fully implemented. This program does include a rate increase for trash service, so all customers will be affected by the trash rate increase, but it does include free recycling of any size two times a week. So when you do the math, it's way less expensive for a business to have this program than the way it used to be where you actually paid for your recycling services. Also, we have a lot of information that we're going to be using to go out to the businesses and reinforce the program, educate them, which we found was the biggest deficit, was education. And we're going to be blowing that out January till who knows when. We'll just keep doing it. I'd like to introduce Ken Furlough. He's our recycling manager who actually managed the program and he's going to go over actually the process that they undertook.
Good evening, everyone. And just want to just say again, what a wonderful job the ambassadors actually did for us. And we really relied on their work and their, and just their availability as well, too, to really help us gather information that we actually need as well. So just to kind of give you the numbers they were able to collect for us, 55% of the customers, we actually, out of this pool of 600 roughly that are, that actually the businesses were audited and visited by the ambassadors, the 55% are currently being contacted to implement the recycling service in the city. And so out of that, 10% confirmed and their services are ready to have their bins ordered as of today. 15% requested third-party hauler information forms. So actually what that means, those customers are third-party candidates and they're already doing some form of recycling. And that number actually helps us to provide the city with your diversion ratio, which will help you meet that goal by the state mandate law as well. 20% of our customer base so far have declined to participate, but I just want to just identify in that 20%, those are customers that are number one, non-AB 341 required to recycle, as well as the material, meaning some companies are generating more wood, metal, and styrofoam. So we really don't need to pursue those customers to recycle in the program. So here's a photo of all the ambassadors, Oga, Norma, Christine, Alfredo, Maria, and myself.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm sorry, my voice is not so good. What I was, my job was adding the trash. So what we used to do, go into the, well, not in the trash cans, but by the trash cans, check what percentage was trash, what percentage was recycled, and the food waste that people do on the big bins, and the green waste. We used to contact the business owners, let them know about the new law, and we had to just do the audits and put the percentage of each of the recycle, what percentage was the recycle, what percentage was the green, the food waste. And we used, with that information, will let them, the customer, know what size of bins, bins will they be using. Basically, that was the recycle, the audits. All right? Thank you.
I'll go ahead and say in Spanish. Buenas noches, señor alcalde y miembro del consilio. Estoy aquí para compartir una experiencia de un taller que el señor Kenneth and me yo facilitamos a residentes, perdón, de un complejo de apartamentos.
I will be translating. Good evening, mayor and councilmen members. I am here to share with you an experience about a workshop that Kenneth and I facilitated with residents in an apartment complex.
Hablamos sobre el programa de reciclaje de artículos grandes. Les explicamos que se pueden reciclar, que se puede reciclar, y también les explicamos el proceso de los, recoger los artículos grandes, por ejemplo, los colchones, estufas, sofases, armarios.
We talked about, about the recycling program as well as the bulk item program. We explained what we can, what can be recycled and the process of bulk item pickup, for example, mattresses, stoves, sofas, and armors.
Los residentes, los residentes estaban positivos y contentos porque fuimos a explicarles sobre el reciclaje.
The residents were positive and happy because we were able to, we went out to explain about the recycling program.
Good evening. My name is Maria Gonzalez, and I'm here to speak to you about some obstacles that we've seen. We found that while we were doing the audits, we found the major problem, obstacle was the space. The enclosures are either too small to fit another bin and they also didn't have space outside the bins. We also walked around to see if we can find other spaces that they can put the recycling bin in, and they honestly don't have that many, many properties didn't have enough space to put another bin in. Another thing is also that we found that a lot of residents didn't know what to recycle, how to recycle, and they wanted more information. But in a positive note, we, they were very happy that we personalized as well as talked to them about the program. For example, I had a property manager very upset with me saying, why do we have to do this? And then I sat there and explained to her what the program was, what is going to benefit for her, as well as the lack of the, the way that they can reduce their own trash. It won't be everywhere. And towards the end, she ended up showing me exactly where she wanted it and she, we ended up being friends. And from start to end, it took an hour for me to get her to explain everything to her, to her not to be so upset with us. Now Kenneth would be speaking.
And just want to mention, just in what Maria said, being able to identify certain businesses with limited enclosure spaces, what we were able to do is identify how we can offer share bin services for the business as well, and also provide a cart service for those customers. And next, I want to introduce to you Norma, that had the opportunity to go out with Cal Recycle. If you're familiar with Cal Recycle, they're pretty much, they're over the, pretty much the mandate of the state of California with the AB 341. So we really have to provide them information, what we have as far as...
You guys better check. Yeah, you know what?
Call an ambulance, you guys. Ricardo, what's on hit? Can you call an ambulance? All right. Give him water? Terry? Terry?
We're going to take a short recess, please. If you'd like to step outside, you're more than welcome to do so, or you can just go ahead and sit, stay seated.
Thank you. Good evening.
Well, we just never know what's going to happen, do we?
That's correct.
Can't imagine what was happening. It kind of put me off my thoughts on everything. It's such a shock to have something like that happen. But he screams out, we don't know what's happening, and then he falls forward. I don't know if he bumped his head on the, on the back of the seat or not, I don't know what to do.
Yeah.
Very scary that something like that could happen. But I talked to him a little while ago, he seemed fine. You know, there's no indication that anything was, you know, going to happen. I was, I was going to talk about the protests and all this stuff. The, I don't know what these people are protesting about exactly. This big guy with his big hands hits the police officer, and if he hadn't shot him, he would have probably killed him with his big hands. He beat up a store clerk, they have it on video. I don't understand what exactly they're protesting. Maybe they should have been more evident about protesting about Trevon Martin. That was more of a thing to protest about. Zimmerman forced the issue, they told him to leave it alone. I could understand him being upset about that, but this? I don't get it. I might have been missing something, but they were throwing things down onto the freeway. What gives them the right to do that? Running across the freeway? That's just plain nuts. I mean, are you supposed to swerve to miss these people and end up rolling your car and getting killed because some idiot decides to run across there? Not me, I don't know about anybody else, but I would swerve, but I'm not going to roll over because of it. This is totally nuts. It just doesn't make any sense. He was a big thug, basically, a big bully with big hands. His hands were his weapon. He didn't need a gun, he didn't need anything. He had those big, big hands. And he's over there hitting that officer. And now the officer's living in fear, getting death threats, no less, for something this guy caused. And they're protesting. And they're tearing up their own area in Missouri. What do they think is going to happen? Those businesses aren't going to move back there. I know I wouldn't. So, and they think this is helping their cause. That's the sick part. They think that it's really going to make everybody like it more. All it tells me is, hey, open the border, let more of them flood across to keep these people in check. Because they're out of, these people are out of control. They're over there tearing everything up. I know, everybody, everybody has a right to protest, don't get me wrong, but there's a right way and a wrong way to do that. And then they let them out so they can have Thanksgiving, and the next day, they were out there doing it again, trying to get up on the freeway. Charlie Beck should have kept them in there. That's how you, that's a deterrent, keeping them in the can. They want to cause trouble and throw things on the freeway and do things like that, not letting them out and saying, oh, we, we don't expect you to do that.
Thomas, thanks for sharing time, sir.
Oh, is, already? Jeez.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, moving along with public communication.
I'm Mr. Luna. And your agenda, or the minutes you guys give us, I didn't know you could skip all over the place and do your agenda, but it seems that you can do anything you want. Public communication is right up on top of your agenda, and I might as well throw this piece of paper outside because you guys don't follow anything you write. And it's sad to say that you people aren't pushed to follow this. You put it out here, you should follow it. If you don't want to put it out here, throw it in the trash. The recycle people will love you guys for that. Also, I argued for probably over a year about containers. Now, this soccer team, we're back to the same thing again, more containers. I didn't know Long Beach was so close, but you people seem to want to keep putting Long Beach back over here. Long Beach is way in the heck over there somewhere. So why do you people keep giving other people stuff? You know, you want to give something away, I'll keep telling you to the day I die. You want to give something away? Pay our taxes for us so we don't, citizens have to pay it. Why do you guys keep doing that? We asked you not to do something and you do it anyway. So technically, we're up here talking useless. What you people tell us is what you guys dictate to us. You guys work for us, so when we request something as citizens of Ballpark, you guys have to think a lot about that and start doing that stuff. All of you guys and ladies, excuse me. We got a new city manager, we got two new city council people, or three, we got three councils, a mayor and the other lady. You guys are supposed to work for 75,000 people. Let's start doing that. You don't work for 75,000 people. We can show you time after time that it's three against three, two against one, and so on and so on. We don't need that. We need for you to vote for 75,000 people out here that we put you guys up there. So you should work for all of us. How many times do we have to tell you folks that? You all work for the city of Ballpark. That's the title you got. But the people you should be worried about are the 75,000 people. Think of that. And we don't need anybody in this city to have a container. They want to put stuff out there, you have them build it and get tax revenue. Don't give anything away.
Mr. Luna, your time's up.
There goes my three minutes again.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication.
It seems like we're going back into the body system. You know, why are we giving any space to a soccer league? You know, it's our, our city, our city property. The 75,000 residents of Ballpark, not one individual can just go store stuff in there. Look at the Little Lakes for baseball. You go to National, they take care of their fields on a daily basis, on a monthly basis, everything. Always nice green grass. You go to American, same thing. You go to Eastside, Little League, they take care of themselves. It seems like there's something going wrong that the soccer league needs some space to store stuff in there. What they're storing, I don't think it's very alpha, for one thing. You know, porta potties. Uh-uh, come on. Come on, you guys, you're working for 75,000 people, you know. That's something that, you know, some of you guys are going for election next year. I hope you guys make the right decision tonight. Because if you don't, we are really going to go after you guys. So think before you vote, okay? There's a lot of things that other people would like to go store over there. Motor home, mixer, or something. They pay their taxes. Is it right that one individual can go do that in city property that belongs to us, the You guys let me know, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you, and good evening. All right, moving along with public communication.
Good evening.
Good evening. Greg Tuttle, sorry we missed you at the thing, but I know you had a good excuse.
Thank you.
I just want to clear something up with Monica Garcia, that I don't run a dirty little, oh, she left. Oh, that's interesting. Mayor, you were gone, so we'll fill you in. I run a dirty little business and all I do is change oils. Well, that's far from the truth of what I really run. And I run a high-end machine shop that sells motors all over the country. But for a councilperson to come in and do that kind of stuff, she needs to have a little training, a little decor on what happens and to not belittle the businesses that support this city. Okay, now on to the thing with the soccer league. Done a lot of investigation, I got four years of tax returns on them. I've talked to Blanca Rubio at the school. I know, mayor, that you've called for the soccer league. I know Ricardo Pacheco's called for the soccer league. I know these people have a lot of political pull. I know that they try to get Roger Hernandez to do something also. And the thing relies on, these people need to pay their share. These people claim on their tax returns, they spend on 2010, $13,372 for field maintenance. Well, according to the school district, they've not paid them a dime and they've been trying to get money from them for the last three years of what they owe them, $5,000 or $6,000, which they paid them a portion of it. They don't pay field fees. That would be like you owning a business, mayor, and you come in and say to the landlord, I don't want to pay rent. That's not what I want to do. But they go there every Saturday and Sunday and play. They don't pay for the city usage of the yard. Now, I have reports here that they break even or they go in the hole every year on these reports. How are they going to pay for the liability insurance to ensure these porta potties that they want to store in there? How is that going to come about? Well, if you take what these people charge in membership, what they charge in the games, they're making over $300,000 a year, not this menial $25,000 that they claim on their tax returns, which is going to the IRS. Okay, I've had enough. I've tried to be nice, just take the porta potties out, pay your fair share to the parks and rec over here for using the yard. They don't even have the common courtesy to, well, let's get some grass seed, let's get some, have the people come over there and poke some holes in there, aerate it, put fertilizer on. No, they use it all day, all week long, for free. Now, take somebody that wants to a church association, which we just had a thing come in, they want to use that park, they have to pay a fee. Why is it somebody doesn't have to pay and another one does? Well, it's called the political... Well, it's called the political buddy deal. We need to stop this. This was one of our campaign things that we went into. We're not doing any more buddy deals. We will fight it to the end. This has gotta stop. We don't want the freebie stuff. We want everybody to pay their fair share. This is why the city got into a hole. That's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Thanks.
All right, good evening. Thank you very much. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, come on up.
Hello, I just wanted to formally introduce myself. My name is Diana Partida, and I am here on behalf of the Office of Assemblymember Roger Hernandez. Um, I will be the newest field representative that has been assigned for Baldwin Park. Um, so any questions or concerns, please let me know, and I look forward in working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate that. Uh, all righty, so, um, at this point, anyone else wishing to speak under public communication? See no further interest, and I'll declare it closed. All righty. Okay, so this one, we'll go over to the consent calendar that we have. And we have consent calendar, we have items one through eight. Oh, yeah, that's right. Yes, go ahead, legal council. We do have an amendment, forgot about that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's an amendment to item number six, the proposed agreement for storage of soccer league equipment at Barnes Park. This did not get into the packet, so I'm gonna read it into the record here, and it'll be part of the agreement. Um, the amendment states as follows. Delete section eight, page two, and replace with, uh, all caps, maintenance, all caps, league, shall be solely responsible for the cost of maintaining, cleaning, covering, or any other action concerning its equipment stored at Barnes Park. The city shall have no duty, responsibility, or any other obligation to maintain in operating order, clean, cover, or take any action whatsoever except as expressly stated in this agreement related to stored equipment. Exhibit A to the agreement shall be an inventory list of equipment stored at Barnes Park. Any change in the number or nature of the equipment shall require prior approval of the city. The city shall have the right to inspect any, inspect any stored equipment for compliance with this agreement. Any material violation of this agreement may serve as a basis to terminate this agreement.
All right, thank you. We're gonna go and add that to the amendment, which is once we come over under consent calendar. Um, all right, so at this point, council members wishing to pull any item? I'll go ahead and pull item number four. All right, if I don't see, or, so no one's wishing to pull any other items, at this point, I'll go ahead and move for consent calendar items.
Mayor, one, one comment, please.
Sure.
Though before, I was waiting to see if it was the correct time.
Sure.
Um, in regard to the, uh, the soccer agreement, the...
Well, let's, let's pull that item out for you instead.
For discussion?
Yes, item number, so go ahead and pull item number six for Vice Mayor Cruz Baca, and also item number four is the one I pulled, so at this point...
Mayor, I have another, just a quick question, but I might as well pull it. Number five, please, thank you.
All right, so we'll go ahead and pull items number four, five, and six. So at this point, I'll move for consent counts with the exception of four, five, and six. That is my motion. Hello?
I hold second.
Okay, who's second? Vice Mayor's second. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, we'll go down to item four, which is the one I requested, which is conduct a second reading by title only and way further reading of ordinance 1366, entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, eliminating subchapter 153.115 in the Baldwin Park Municipal Code relating to downtown overlay. Uh, let me, uh, Amy, I'm good. Can you come up? I have a question on this. So, this 139, so basically, it's being removed, completely removed.
Yes.
So let me ask you a question. So can a body shop, they say they find a place out in downtown somewhere. Can they legally move in there if they were to find space?
Not within the mixed-use zone within the downtown. However, um, to the east of downtown, over by Auction Village, that area is zoned industrial-commercial, and we do permit automobile repair facilities in that area with, with planning commission approval of a conditional use permit.
Fine. The only reason why, I had a call today, someone wanted to open up an additional buy shop around here, and I won't mention the address because it looks like the person's not gonna end up with the property.
Right.
He happened to ask me, and I said, well, hold on. Okay, so, so that's, so that, okay, so it does not apply to the downtown?
Right.
Okay.
All this is doing is removing the downtown overlay. The development standards for the underlying zone, be it mixed-use one, R1, IC, those standards still apply.
Okay. Now, how does that apply along the old Howard Johnson where we had the Regency Motel Hotel?
Doesn't even apply.
Does not?
Nope.
That was another question that someone asked me. All right.
Nope.
Okay. All right, then that's fine. So at this point, I'll go ahead and move for item number four. Uh, that's my motion. Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any objections? See none, so move. Item number five, which is the approval of an agreement to allow temporary modular office trailer to be placed within an existing parking area at 5050 River Grade Road in conjunction with an existing building, Lex Medical, for a maximum period of 12 months. So at this point, Councilmember Susan Rubio requested this item.
Yes, I thank you, and I think this is for Amy as well. I know it's temporary, but I wanna make sure there's safeguards in place. For example, if anybody else wanted to put a side office, you know, we wanna be able to have some measures as to. If we're gonna allow them to do it, then somebody else may come up and say, we want a side office as well. So if, do we have any aesthetics and conditions for all that?
No. Which is the reason why we are doing this agreement. Um, currently, our code does not allow for a temporary use of this nature. However, um, especially with, and I'm gonna use Helix Medical since that's the one we're talking about tonight. Um, they do not have the floor area within their existing facility. You know, and, you know, we really wanna try and help our businesses. Um, they have agreed, and they need to sign this agreement, which will be recorded against the property, by the way, um, that it can only be there for up to a year unless written extensions are approved. Um, if anybody else wants to do this, we look at it on a case-by-case basis. However, we do have, for lack of our terms, a little tickler in my file that, excuse me, when we do a code amendment, we wanna be able to look at things like this. So this is, you know, for a limited time, and it is to help a business that doesn't currently have the room to be able to facilitate this new software installation with the training that's gonna go along with it.
And I think it's a great idea, but once again, if anybody else decided to come and ask, 'cause it would be probably not a good idea to deny someone else the same right. But if there's safeguards to that, then, then I'm okay with it. So Mayor, with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you, Amy.
All right, so thank you. And that's with the amendment that was read by the legal council. Does that? Oh, sorry about that, yes. All right, thank you very much. At this point, there's a motion for item five. I'll second for Councilmember Susan Rubio. Any objections? See none, so move. Item number six, requested by Vice Mayor Cruz Baca, the approved, the program agreement to the Baldwin Park Youth Soccer League. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I would like to state, and I would like to bring to the attention, because I did meet with the, the three gentlemen, the two Hernandez and Mr. Gonzalo, um, in regards to trying to come to an agreement with this. And my only thing is that I would like to see in the near future for them to really consider my offer or my suggestion that they offer 19 scholarships to 19 students from our middle schools, as well as our elementary schools here in Baldwin Park, to give a chance to children that can, that do not have the money to be able to play soccer. Um, when we, when I met with them, I have to keep in mind that I, I met Pelé, and I know Pelé, and I know where he came from. And I would like to see that opportunity here in Baldwin Park. And I'm hoping that in the near future, we can see those 19 scholarships. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. At this point, you wanna go ahead and, and we'll move for approval? A motion by you on item number six?
Motion, I'll second.
Second, by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we'll go over to the City Council acting as successor agency.
Mayor, but before we close, I just wanna, you know, before we close, obviously, moving on from the soccer. I don't know why there's so much issues about the soccer league. I support the soccer league. It's been an organization that has been here for many years. Uh, it's a soccer league that provides at no cost to the city a lot of, uh, a lot of teams that play soccer throughout the community. Uh, the soccer field, they provide registration, scheduling of, of, of the officials, that's the referees, prepping the fields, coaches' meetings, insurance policies, securing fields, providing safe and clean environment, providing an elaborate awards ceremony. So many of us have been to their awards ceremony that they have at either, at the park or at the school district where there's hundreds of kids that, that are recognized for their participation in the different soccer sports that they have. Um, in addition, I know that a lot of them go on to CIF when they leave the soccer league. They go on to the high schools and they play, uh, in the CIF championship. And that's, a lot of that is due to the earlier development that the soccer league has for these children that play, and then they, they grow up and they go into the soccer league and, and the high school. Uh, and that's just a lot of positive development that I think that, that the soccer league provides for the community. Um, we've also, you know, there, there's a lot of talk, it's a nonprofit organization, and why should we give them something and not others? So let me, let me just, uh, give some background on what we did for all the other nonprofits. And I'm talking about the National Little League at Olive School, the American Little League at Alwin School, the Eastside Little League at Violin School, uh, the Lucky Baldwin Little League, uh, which is not anywhere in existence. Uh, Mr. Lohan is not here? And I know he's on one of the leagues, of these leagues. And a few years ago, in 2002, we, uh, threw a, a lawsuit that we had, we got a million dollars, and the city, through the council at that time, invested that $2 million in new dugouts, bleachers, turf, irrigation, and fencing. Uh, just to name a couple of items. For the American Little League, it was bleachers, paint, fencing, a large parking lot, literally putting asphalt, doing all the grading and all the construction. For Eastside Little League, we did lights, bleachers, and irrigation. Uh, at the time, for Lucky Baldwin, it was lights, fencing, and bleachers. So we sat down with each league, and we talked to them about the needs that they needed, and we put up, uh, a lot of this equipment that they had. Now, uh, do we charge them for that? Do I say, hey, you know, Little League, you gotta pay us back? No, it was a grant that we gave to these little leagues, and we, and we help all our little leagues. We help, in, in this case, you know, for the soccer league, for the size program that it has, it's a tremendous benefit to our community, uh, at no cost to the city, because I know they, they work with the school district, actually use their fields. They don't use, I think they only use one field one day a week. That's Barnes Park, that they use as a soccer field. But our other parks are not big enough for them to use. So they go to the school district, and they have whatever agreements they have with those school districts to, to accommodate them to, to play on their fields. So the actual city budget is not impacted at all. Now, I'm sorry that our commissioners from Park and Rec made a statement and said that we have containers, the type of containers that are parked at the Long Beach, uh, you know, at the Port of Long Beach, those huge containers that are driven by trucks, that is not true. And I, and I would like to make sure, especially our commissioners, give the proper information, because you're representing the city. We're talking about small porta potties. There's seven of them, and they're on a little trailer, and they're cleaned by them. There's six of them that they use, and they, they have to come over, wheel them out, drive them to the different sites, because our schools don't have the, the capacity to have those bathrooms, so they, they provide that too as a part of the cost to their program. They bring out these porta potties every weekend, and they, and they put them out. They have a service that cleans them, and then they put them back in. Okay, so, uh, there, there's, you know, no cost to the city. Yes, their part, uh, on, on a city property, you know, but very minimal impact to the city. Uh, there's some exaggerations about, well, I could park my RV on there. You know, it's, it's, it's not, because if you don't have a nonprofit with, with a league, you know, you're not gonna be parking your personal private cars out there, your private RVs. This is a, a service, uh, to our community. And I think that I wanna, uh, you know, let them know that they shouldn't be admonished here. They should be, uh, respected for what they do here in the community. If there's IRS issues that are going on, you know, those are issues between the league and the IRS. Uh, and there's, I, I've heard a lot about these IRS issues. There's nothing to substantiate the fact that there's some IRS issue. I mean, all I know is I was shown a paper that showed me that they actually, they filed their, their tax returns, like they're supposed to file a tax return. It's a nonprofit, and they show no profit because they're a nonprofit. So the, these exaggerated, uh, allegations that are made are just, are just unfair to that soccer league that practices here in our city. So, uh, you know, we're, we're doing a, a small, uh, support for them to play in that, on that soccer league. I mean, that's just the extent of it. I don't know why this continues on. And, uh, you'd like to talk to Mr. Tuttle and the two soccer, uh, I'm sorry, two commissioners and talk more about it. I don't see any issues here. As a matter of fact, I wanna recognize our soccer league, maybe not this meeting, but in January, to recognize the whole soccer league, have them come here and, and recognize for the hard work that they're doing, for the strong support that, uh, that they give to our community. And you'll see that a lot of these kids are here from Baldwin Park. So, uh, with that, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. All right, though, at this point, anyone else wishing to, well, we're at the end. I just wanna say, if it was up to me, I'd open all of the school district fields and let these kids get out there and run around, 'cause that's the best thing to do versus having them out in the street. So thank you very much for what you said. So at this point, we'll go ahead and move on to the next subject. All right, so at this point, um, which may not be a bad petition, by the way. All right, so let's go on to the next one, which reads the City Council acting as successor agency of the Community Development Commission. Uh, so we have consent calendar. We have items number one, which is the approval parcel map, 72543, uh, that we have here at this point. So I'll go ahead and move for approval. That's my... Any objections? See none, so move. So we're seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Yes, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we have nothing else further to report. Uh, council members, before we adjourn?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanna remind all our community that we do have our tree, our Christmas tree dining ceremony this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the community center. So we wanna invite everyone to join us that day. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, before I forget, just wanna reminder that we're not having a second meeting, am I correct? Am I correct in that?
We have not determined yet if we're gonna have a quorum or not.
That, that means we will meet on the, is it the 17th? All right, okay, all right, all right, then that's fine. Uh, oh, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll definitely be available on that day.
We have the mayor protesting with him.[1615.91]